Take your event to the next level with Crossroads TV. Professional audio and video production, multi-camera live streaming, audio system for your panels and entertainment, plus stunning video screen production on LED walls. High-quality, seamless production tailored to your needs. Let us bring your vision to life. Contact us today.
Started. Good evening, and welcome to the first of, I believe, four city council budget workshops this evening. We are going to start off with a budget review and then move into a few other departments on the agenda. So Brian, why don't you kick it off for us, please?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. So as the mayor just said, welcome to our fiscal year 26 budget process. We'll have just a few highlights here, and then we're going to move into bringing up some department heads and getting some departments done. I will say that departments tonight are relatively easy and straightforward, most of them. Thursday night will be a little bit more interesting. So just some highlights on this budget. You know, when we started putting together this budget, we were thinking this was going to be a somewhat more difficult budget year than last year. So the initial guidance was no new headcount, and we stuck to that. There's no new headcount. There are no new major programs or initiatives here. This is, I think, what we would call as close to a no-frills kind of bare-bones budget as possible. That said, there are still costs involved. There are still inflationary pressures. There are still contractual obligations, and there are all the usual things that drive a meanwhile budget every year. The good news is, despite all of that, if you look on your first page or summary section, and we're talking about the city now, the schools, there is a 5% placeholder in here now. We don't have final school numbers yet. And just another note, the county, we have 10% in here, but the county commission is supposed to take up a budget that's, I believe, a 9.6% increase this week or next week. So it'll be just a hair under that. So but looking at the city, under total cost, you have over last year a 2.65% increase, which in the grand scheme of things is not terrible. I personally thought it was going to be higher this year. We were helped out in a couple of areas. One being some of our revenues came back a little bit stronger than anticipated. The biggest one was state revenue sharing came back quite a bit better than we were anticipating, which was welcome news for us. And then if you remember, at the end of the last budget year, we had bumped some revenues towards the very end of the budget process and were kind of doubtful that we would be hitting a lot of those. So the good news is we have hit some of them. EMS, it looks like we're going to somewhat narrowly, I think in the neighborhood of maybe $50,000 or $60,000, the forecast miss on that one. But excise and some of the code revenues, we are going to be hitting. So and if you remember, there was some discussion about whether we would actually hit those revenues last year. Well, we had. So those, as well as the state revenue sharing, which is a very nice little bump there, has helped us out quite a bit. That and just controlling the rest of the spending throughout the rest of the budget. We are able to land at 2.65 on the city side as of now. Now, there's a couple things to note. I think you got an email. I know you got an email earlier today regarding the fire department. The closure of Inland Hospital, and Chief Frost will talk a lot more about this on Thursday evening, has severely complicated our EMS picture here in the city. And so we, as a city, are going to have to make some decisions about what we want and what sort of services are expected here in the city of Waterville, a service center in our community. So we'll talk more about that Thursday, but there's a proposal there that will jump these numbers quite a bit overall. So but we'll have to talk more about that. So just again, for the headlines here, 2.65% overall. There is a 3% non-union COLA built in, as has been the tradition the last number of years in here. As you know, most of the labor contracts are more than that this year. And then our major cost drivers, of course, just the cost of everything, goods and services going up. But our personnel is the big piece of this budget. We obviously have contractual obligations that we absolutely have to meet because we signed an agreement to do that. So those are our major cost drivers. And then the school, we will see, once we get their final numbers in, how that stacks up. And like I said, the county, we're looking at what I believe is going to be about a 9.6% increase with the county. And just again, of note, last year was, I think it was about a 36% increase, another 9% this year. So that's, you know, we're pushing almost a 50% increase over two years with the county, which is just huge. I mean, I understand they have some things to take care of, but really, really sharp increase with county government in the last two years. And I would also add that I think our representation at times is not always the best either. So unfortunately, they did have a county budget listening session here in Waterville. Can't fault them on that, but the rate of increase has been pretty dramatic. That's the kind of high-level summary, Christina. More to add? Other things you want to highlight? And let me just say quickly, I really want to thank Christina, as well as Sarah Cross, for working on this budget this year and putting this together. They spent a lot of time on this, a lot of hours. So thank you both for your work here. We appreciate it.
Only that, as we go through, I think the departments can speak. Sorry. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you before. Check.
Okay. I think as you go through, the departments may have some other areas for savings and changes. Brian touched upon the EMS and the current situation with the hospital, but the fuel and diesel bids came in for numbers after the original budget numbers were put together. So some have reached out and expressed that there may be some savings within their departments in those areas. I asked, rather than us to, while we were preparing the books, try to make adjustments here, there, in little bits in a bunch of departments. I said, why don't we wait until after the presentation, and the council has a chance to comment, and then we go back and make the changes and see where it is. So I think some of them may talk to that when it's their turn, either tonight or later in the week. And then anything that has, they've gotten additional information or details since we put this together. Of course, this is a working document for the council consideration at this point, and we can make changes to anything as we go along. So we'll make notes of it and make sure that we get it amended appropriately. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to clarify, the COLA increase, you said 3%.
Correct.
Is that right? Okay.
Which is consistent with previous years.
Yeah. I just didn't, I was, wanted to make sure I heard it. Okay, thanks.
All right. So if we're good here. Yeah, sorry, this podium's kind of in the way. Can you see us okay? Okay. I think we're going to move on to administration, if we're good to go. Okay. And like I said, a lot of these departments tonight will be pretty quick and pretty painless. Not a lot of changes in some of them. So starting off with administration, there are a couple lines I'll just highlight here. First of all, full-time salaries and wages. So this number you'll see is a decrease over last year. This funds the current positions that we currently have at the rate that they are now. So basically, that means there's no economic development position in here. There's no assistant city manager. There's, what we have right now is what's included right here. Obviously, if there's an interest, and I know there's been some discussion of, you know, and I think it depends on who you have coming in also, if there's an interest in juggling some positions, that would impact this line here. But as you can see, we're already dropping another about $35,000 over last year, so, which was on top of another cut. So there is some potential room to do something with positions there if there were, there were interests, or there were interests by a new person occupying, you know, this office.
Can you, of the menu of possible positions that we could add, can you rank them in order of importance from your perspective as the current city manager?
Yeah. I mean, my order may be different than someone else's.
For sure. But you're the city manager.
And we had this discussion last year also. So, I mean, my view, I think having an economic development person would be number one. I mean, I don't view the assistant city manager as absolutely necessary here, and I'm still standing by that. However, I think a lot of people coming into this position are definitely going to want one, so I'd be prepared to hear that. I know there's been some discussion among this group on that position, but, I mean, I would say economic development, one. You know, I think the special assistant position works fairly well, at least for me. So I wouldn't, you know, necessarily rank the assistant manager in one or two. I'd put it down further. But I think, you know, with, especially with the closure of Inland Hospital and the economic challenges we continue to grapple with and will probably have in the foreseeable future, I think it's a worthwhile position. I think it's a good interface with the Growth Council. I think every other city our size, well, I know every other city our size has at least one, but usually more, economic development people in-house on staff.
So that the people in Waterville can understand what you're talking about with this person? What would be the kinds of things that this person would do that are not currently being done in the city?
So I think, you know, and while our community development specialist is doing this work too, but I think working with downtown businesses, I think working with businesses in general, those looking at coming into the city, and really sort of being that ambassador for the city to go out and showcase the city and talk about why this is a good place to come and set up shop and do business, or bring your organization, or whatever it is, they need to be playing offense consistently all the time, trying to get people, entities, businesses, organizations into the city. It's an important task. It's a lot of networking. It's a lot of playing offense. The Growth Council, you know, does this work also. This is not putting down any of the work they do, but they also work for the region, for the area. You know, we had, obviously, the position previously that was dedicated just to Waterville. The idea, some of the idea, I think, when we didn't renew that contract was to maybe bring it in-house. We decided to hold off on hiring because we had just brought in the special assistant, and it was sort of a new arrangement. We also have Michael Hall to see how things would work. I think things are working, but I think if there were a position in-house to interface directly with the Growth Council on the economic development front, I think for what that position would cost us, which would be half as much as an assistant city manager, would be money well spent.
And you suggested that assistant city manager wasn't one of the top two. So who's?
For me, it's not.
So who's in that second position? What is that second position that you think?
Of what we currently have, our existing?
No, 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 no. If you were to create, you said, you said an assistant city manager isn't even the second priority amongst potential new positions.
Yeah. So for me, it would be communications, marketing and communications. You know, and I think the mayor and others can attest to this. There's a lot that happens in 2025 that's communications-based, and online, and social media, and Instagram, and everything else that we do now. This is how people get their information. This is how people get knowledge. This is how we showcase the city. And so I think that position, working with an economic development person, would be a really good combination. And, you know, those two positions together would probably be about the cost of an assistant city manager. So now, that doesn't mean that an assistant city manager can do a lot of that work also. That's another option, depending on who you get, what kind of candidate you have. So I think there are a number of options here, and there is, you know, some budget to work with if you want to. But I, you know, for me, you know, and I think I mentioned this last year maybe, I thought the economic development position was important.
And I have two more questions, if that's okay. Can you talk about the role of an assistant city manager?
Well, Waterville was actually the first time that I've worked with one. Saco doesn't have one, which is interesting for a place their size. So I think it's potentially, you know, it could be. Let me say this. When you have the right person, it is a vital position. I think the number one thing it is, is when you talk about succession planning, when you talk about this happening, you know, right now, you have a natural person to fall back on to fill the seat. There is someone else that's occupying a manager-level position that a special assistant does not. So that's, you know, that's certainly a help. You know, but I think, you know, it's, you can kind of mix and match these positions, and I think it could work in a number of different scenarios. For me personally, I think just because I, you know, I've gone through most of my time in this career not having one, it's not quite as important for me. But I think for a lot of people, maybe coming in here, they're going to expect to see that position.
And the day-to-day kinds of tasks that that person would be doing as opposed to what we could hope for from the next city manager, so that people can understand the distinction? What kinds of things would we expect the assistant city manager to be doing?
Well, I think, you know, my view is they should be, you know, fully briefed on everything the manager is doing. There are different kind of models. You know, some have the assistant manager kind of covering just certain departments. I think actually Steve Daley had kind of a similar arrangement that the assistant oversaw three or four or five departments, and that was kind of completely separate. I think a better model is that both of you oversee everything. Both of you have good communication with regard to what's happening in all departments. So I think the, you know, the assistant would be a right-hand person that's fully briefed on everything and is ready to step in. You know, if you are on vacation, or you disappear, or you take another job, that they're able to step in on moment's notice.
Okay. So my last question for the moment is, you had alluded, when you talked about the 9% or whatever the number was, the reduction from the year before. What number am I looking?
Correct. So it's line 30, full-time salaries and wages.
There you are. Thanks. Yeah, 9.6%. So, and that was with the addition of no additional personnel and flat wages. So if you...
Well, there's a 3% COLA.
Right. The 3% COLA, right. How competitive, so I have to think about how to phrase this question to get what I want to hear, but how competitive are the wages in this department, in the administrative tree, given that COLA, where they're at now?
I think they're, I think they're pretty competitive comparing to other communities.
Across, across that.
From myself down through the department, yeah.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, I'm just, I'm a little surprised that, at the numbers, given that we budgeted for a whole other position. Can you explain?
The numbers that, what was, what was the nature of your surprise?
That we don't have, we have this flat wages, and we don't have another position to hire, which was supposed to be in the budget.
Right. But there have been several reductions. So we reduced last year, when we eliminated the assistant manager position, and then there's another about $35,000 reduction this year in wages.
But the difference between '25 and '26 is $30,000 less, correct? And that, the '25 number was, included funding for an economic development person, which we haven't hired, right?
Correct. Right.
Yeah, that's what's, that's the nature of my surprise.
So this includes the 3% COLA for all the positions.
Well, okay.
And then it also factors in where we hire the special assistant role, which was about $15,000 more than we were anticipating. And then there was also another promotion given in the department. So between those three factors, I think that's eaten into some of, we had about, I will tell you, we had about, to hire the, about $60,000 to hire the other position.
$60,000 to what?
To hire the other, the economic development position we were thinking about hiring. We had about $60,000 to do that.
Okay.
So the difference there is we've added in, we've added in everyone's COLA for this year.
Right.
Plus the promotion, plus coming in a little over on the special assistant hire this last time.
Okay.
I got a question. I mean, this is just for numbers in order for me to have, like, how much would it be if you bought everybody up to 5% COLA? Like, what would the numbers be?
Across the board around the city. Yeah. Christina can figure that out.
I could figure it out. I don't know that I could figure it out on the spot.
Oh, we can get it after, but I'm just like curious to know. Like, if we go across the board at 5%, because cost of living is really high, especially for people like, that are working, just point-blank, cost of living is really high, and I really value the workers that we have, and to really bring them to 5%, I'm interested to see that number.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on in administration. So some of the changes you see are just employee, so through the health, dental, all that, these are just changes with personnel over the past year that have accounted for those reductions. We did reduce, and again, this is considering, we didn't have an assistant city manager on board anymore. We did reduce some on dues and memberships, as well as training and workshops. Advertising went down a bit, and we also reduced travel for training and conferences also because there were two of us doing some of these things that were a little more costly previously, and now there's, there's one, so.
Brian, I'm sorry, could you just give us line numbers as you're going through? It's a lot of information to absorb.
Sure, yeah. So we've just moved down the list under, administration labor costs, so just moving down. So for example, line 37, group health insurance, you see a substantial reduction there. That's just because of personnel changes with the assistant manager departing and current employee choices.
Okay. Thank you.
And so that... And so that just goes down the line there, but with, with dental and disability and car allowance and all those.
I had a question, sort of, it's my mind.
So the car allowance, was that because of the position as well?
That was the assistant manager also getting a car allowance.
Okay, because I had a question about that.
So then under administration operating costs, as I just said, so line 45, 46, 47, for example, those have been reduced, considering there wasn't an assistant manager also participating in some of these trainings, also being a member of ICMA, for example, which is a couple thousand dollars a year, I think. And also line 51, for example, has reduced the travel training for the same reason.
And I got a question, sorry. So line 51, was that the ICMA training? What was that one?
Yeah, so there are a couple sort of major conferences, the ICMA is the big one, but also the MT-CMA, which is the main Town and City Managers Association, they have several conferences a year. So mostly those, but there may have been some others that our previous manager, assistant manager, attended also that were built into here. All right, moving down, city hall maintenance, labor costs, no major numbers here. I think I said this at the outset, but you'll notice in all departments, main pay-to-leave, this is a new line, and this is to comply with the new main pay-to-leave law. So you'll see that through the document, through our departments. On the city hall side, there's nothing overly major to highlight here unless you have particular questions, but we are trying to take care of this building, obviously the best we can. We've done a lot of work on it in the past couple of years. Under general operating costs, so line 89, for example, there's been a small bump in legal professional services, this is largely what's paying for Bill Lee, and some others here and there if we need some other support. You'll see there's a bump in insurance, but nothing really of note here. Any particular questions in these areas?
Yeah, can you talk a bit about the part-time and temporary wages? Line 64, that went up 38.6%.
So I assume this is custodial. Christina, you have any, right? We have a part-time custodian also that wasn't filled for most of last year.
For part of the year, last year it was empty, and Dan may be stepping up under his contract. Bobby Joe could speak maybe more specifically to it, but it, those two positions, the full-time custodial and the part-time.
So, so there was an additional custodian that was hired or needed?
No, it's a continuation of that position, but I don't know what the marks are. I can mark it down and get that answer for you of what those move, what the percentages and if they were particular probationary last year, where they were only part of a year and then stepped up. But the HR director would be the one that could provide more specific information to the individuals in that position. So I can make it up and get it for the next meeting.
Yeah, sure. In particular, I'm just wondering what the costs are of maintaining, you know, since we moved into this building as well, did that require an additional?
Hours.
Additional hours, is that, yeah.
They are cleaning over here, so it is additional time, right.
Okay. Thanks.
I have a, probably a very easy question, and I have the suspicion I'd have to go back and look at the videos from years past, but I feel like I've asked this question before, so you'll forgive me for being stupid. Can you remind me what deferred compensation is? I don't really remember. There's like a note in my, there's a little question mark, like, what is this?
Deferred compensation. Bobby, explain why it's listed that way, will you? Would you please?
I just, I just don't know what it is. Hi, Bobby Joe.
Hi. So first, I can answer the custodian.
Okay.
He is, our full-timer is eligible for a step increase, so there's a bump per contract, and then our part-time custodian gets a COLA increase. So there's the change there. Deferred comp is our 457 retirement account for non-union, non-main state retirement employees.
Right, 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 okay, yeah. That's ringing a rusty bell, thank you.
Okay. Good.
I'll make note in the book for next year that says dash 457 retirement.
Okay, thank you.
So it's easier.
Oh, yeah.
When you look at it.
Right.
Seeing none, we'll move on to assessing. Ally?
Hi.
Hello.
So this is another one of those easier departments I mentioned, or should be, hopefully, we're about to see. But you'll notice the, one of the biggest changes, I guess, is really just the change in personnel from last year. Obviously Paul retired, Ally is our new assessor, and so you see some of those larger numbers that have changed, there are a lot of numbers reflecting just that change in personnel at the top. There are really no other major lines that stand out here, but Ally, anything you want to highlight, or initiatives, or problems, or anything else you'd like to?
I'm stealing it. So I've not seen much changes in our office, other than we are seeing a little bit of an increase in what we need for professional services, where we are updating TIF maps and a lot of our mapping stuff within the office. We ended up going a little bit over this year, and I'd like to compensate for next year, because we do have a few other things in the works, to make things more user-friendly with the online database, so that people know what is going on in town. Other than that, it's just a slight little increase in training, because I've got to get my new assistant trained and certified, so that she can fill in when I'm on vacation and things like that, and it's a process.
Why are you cutting facility maintenance and office equipment? I mean, it's not a lot of money, but it's, it's very small, but...
Because we have revamped the office. Feel free, come and see it. We did a lot of work ourselves to make it look more open and friendly and calming, which is great. Nobody likes the assessor's office, and that's okay. I guess I can take that stigma. But we no longer need the extra facilities maintenance, because a lot of the work is done. There's a few things left to do, which will get on next budget and get it completely done before the end of next year.
I was in this week, it really does look very nice.
Thank you, Rebecca. We worked really hard.
Yeah.
You did.
It's great.
I was there when you were doing it. And you guys have good candy, too, so it's always good to stop it. I love, who wouldn't like the assessor's office? Sarah has good candy, too.
Sarah does have good candy. We bounce off of each other every now and then. When I don't have what I really need, I go to her office.
All right, any questions for Ally? Okay, thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, moving on next to...
City clerk.
The city clerk.
I'm gonna make you a walk.
Yeah, so you'll notice the next three, clerk, customer service and finance, we did something a little different this year. Basically, customer service is pulled out of two other departments into a standalone, so a lot of these numbers are reflecting that change. Also, Christina, you want to talk about that at all, and why it makes sense to do it this way, and how it's a little more transparent?
It became really difficult for the person, for the customer service manager, to try to determine what they could order and couldn't order, because it was split between departments. And they would have to go see if Patty had enough money to cover her portion, and then come see me and see if I had enough money to cover the other portion, to buy a calculator or whatever they may need. And that's a really hot place to be, when you're in a hurry and you need something. So, and it's always been wages have been split, two-thirds, one-third for the front staff, and then the manager was split half and half between the two departments. So we just felt it was a clearer way to do business and a cleaner picture, to show that department as a standalone of what it is for that customer service office to operate out front there. So we broke it out this year, and we took money both from the finance and from the clerk's budgets to create this, so.
And so again, you'll see that reflected in, in this budget, as well as finance, and then obviously the standalone customer service piece. Outside of that, I don't think there are a ton of major changes or asks with the clerk's office. Patty, things you want to highlight, you want to talk about any revenues in particular, is there anything that stands out?
The revenue increase, the only real revenue increase is in liquor licensing, which we're now handling separately from the vitriolic licenses, so there's a slight bump there. Things vary from year to year ever so slightly, but it's pretty standard from year to year. So the biggest change would be the reflection in the splitting out the customer service budget in the full-time wages and benefits, so that results in 95-ish thousand dollars shifting elsewhere. So really, it's just me and the part-time election staff now. Hi.
Hi.
Sorry. I'll move that back. So really, it's pretty standard. We have two elections next year, one in November, which is a referendum election. I expect it could be a relatively busy election in November, and then June of 2026 is the primary election. So we have two elections to staff.
Any questions for Patty or anyone at the table with regard to the clerk's office budget?
It's, yeah, I just, I think I have to look a little closer to ask a question that makes sense, just because it's not apples to oranges right now. So we're, we're looking at clerk, finance, and customer service.
Right.
As, okay, as a unit, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, we did our best to divvy up training, you know, that's specific to the clerk's function, out of my budget, training that's tax collector, treasurer, out of the finance budget. So it, you know, it's kind of a shell game, if you will.
So it sounds like it will help facilitate operations with the budgets being separate, as far as checking on how much there is and what account, and, yeah?
I can speak really loud if you want, but I think it gives a much clearer picture of what the salaries are for the customer service, what expenditures are, and we know we're going to have to fine-tune it.
Okay.
We based it on, and Wendy gets up here, so much per employee for training and how that calculates out, and with the understanding we may have to adjust mileage or something in the upcoming year, after it's been through one cycle. But everybody can see what those true costs are for what they're doing out there, so.
And something else to remember is it's staff, we own staff in our department, both sides. So there's a lot of training required.
Wow, okay.
So it's, you know, it may be steeper right now, and it may level off once everyone gets the, the training that they need, but there is a lot of training required.
Okay. Thank you.
Quick question?
Yes.
It's just a silly one, but line 35, what's, what's theater? What's that?
Theater licenses are required for anyone that has like movie theaters, per theater. So that's just a license that is in the ordinance that we, we charge fees.
Also for the actual theater?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, customer service.
Hi.
All right, welcome.
Hello.
Hi, Dee.
Hi.
So as we just talked about, this is our, our new addition here, customer service. It is brand-new, so there's not really anything to compare with previous years, but Dee Bustamante is our manager here, she's doing a great job. Anything in particular you want to kind of highlight?
Just that our budget was pulled from finance and the city clerks, and the labor cost is for three union positions, including one salary position. That's what that is for. And training and workshops, it's pretty much one class per year, per customer service rep, including prior learning and any main municipal training, and also for customer service manager certifications. And again, like Christina said, we will evaluate that in, in the year, to see how we are doing with that, as far as our costs. I think that's about it.
I don't know, Dee, you did a good job, but saying prior learning, Bobby Joe got us an opportunity for online learning at a reduced rate for the more number of people within the city that participate in that. And so that has a cost of approximately, I think it was 296 per person a year, but they, gives them access to thousands of classes. So we, so we try to provide that and encourage people participate in that, so that they can get cash handling, customer service manners, how to resolve disputes, how to address tough situations. There's a whole host of them, it's a really good program. So I would not be surprised in the future to see an increase in that line, and hopefully all four of them would take advantage of that, besides the vital statistics and election certification and the motor vehicles. So, but as Dee said, we'll see where that goes.
Any questions for customer service? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Dee.
Moving on to finance.
Brian will give this presentation.
Yeah, April 1st.
There's not a lot within the finance budget this year. As you could see, we significantly went down in labor costs by $142,000. That is the difference between what the cost of living and amounts were for the people who will remain under just the finance heading, which consists of me, the accountant, the tax collector, and the accounts payable and payroll specialist. So four of us will remain within this space area. And we reduced on the operating cost by $2,900, which pretty much directly correlates to what we moved to office supplies and training under the other department, which, from our share. Of course, some of it would come from the clerk's year also. So we try to keep as close as we can to staying flatline or very little increase, we try to offset when we have the opportunity. And one piece that I did want to... And one piece that I did want to bring up that's different, that you will see through some of the budgets, was reviewing the way the TIFs have been handled in the past. And they can get very murky of what they're paying for in a wet amount and how they're coming across into the overall budget. We have fourteen now, and I know there's some further discussions. So, we have created a TIF department budget. You will find it in the back with the summary and the breakdown. That shows exactly what we're looking to fund out of there and how much is being appropriated. And we established under there a training line and tried to disperse it amongst departments that are involved with the TIF administration or calculations, overall annual reporting. So, you will notice under the finance, it says TIF revenue staff offsets and TIF revenue training costs. And in the past, there have been some staffing offsets that have come out of those monies. And now, you can clearly see the breakdown of what department it's going to in the TIF breakdown and where it's coming in and how it's being utilized. So, I want to point that out before somebody says, "What is this funny up top here showing under revenues?" Because it was under Ally's budget also, so, just so you're aware. When it gets to looking at that, I've tried to prepare a nice summary and clearly explain what it's doing. Is there any questions on the finance?
Any questions for finance? Seeing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to health and welfare.
Health and welfare.
Denise.
Hello, Denise. How are you?
Good. Yourself?
Can't complain.
All right.
This is usually another fairly straightforward department. I think there are a few numbers here. There may be some questions on that maybe we can kind of talk a little bit about. I mean, first of all, Denise, anything you want to highlight? But maybe talk about the emergency housing a little bit. We saw a dip there and a little bit of an addition onto the housing all types. Maybe just talk about those numbers. I think that will probably come up. That's kind of the biggest change on here. And then, well, start there or anything else you want to highlight.
Okay. Yeah, I will start with the temporary emergency housing line under the general assistance. This year has been really unusual. So, I kind of based that on what this year was like. We've not seen a lot of the unhoused like we were in previous years. So, that's basically the reason for that big reduction on that line. The other increase on the housing is because if we get people asking for rent assistance, the housing costs are so high now that if we do help them, it's going to increase what we do give them, so.
I got a question. So, any of these housing, are we getting a state match for some of these?
Reimbursement?
Yeah, reimbursement. Yeah, yes. It will be a match, but, yeah. And is that under temporary housing?
Yes, we get seventy percent back from the state.
We'd like more representative.
Yes. My question is, is because we're going down. So, we were at seventy-seven and we're going down to seventy-five. Wouldn't we want to go up more on that because rent is up more?
Well, the seventy-five was under the emergency housing for this fiscal year.
That's the emergency one.
Yeah, for this fiscal year. And as I said, this fiscal year, it has been reduced dramatically.
Okay.
So, that's why I reduced it for this upcoming budget.
Okay.
When you say reduced dramatically, you're talking forty percent reduction, fifty percent in the number of people, not money. I was talking about people.
Oh, the number of people?
Yeah.
I don't have that number, but the dollar amount has, for instance, as of the end of March, we've spent fourteen thousand five hundred dollars on emergency housing assistance. So, that's quite a difference when we budgeted for seventy-five thousand.
So, that could, given the increase in the cost of housing, I mean, you're talking about, what is that, you know, maybe an eighty percent reduction in the demand? Is that right? No, 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 because we have another quarter, so, yeah.
It's substantial.
Sixty percent, something like that.
Yeah, sixty percent.
Okay, well, I guess that's good news, isn't it?
Well, and it's hard to tell with the general assistance program. You never know who's going to walk in the door and what the need is, so.
Yeah.
It's hard to really try to figure that out, but we do the best we can.
No recession 2026.
Right.
Any other questions for health and welfare? Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good evening.
So, a few lines here that may be of some interest. I'll let Bobby Joe kind of highlight some of these. But you see line twenty-three, for example, salary adjustment wages. There's a seven hundred and two percent increase. This is dealing with our labor contracts, correct? And so, when we have these adjustments upward, this is where it's being filled from. So, I think that was the big one, but anything else you'd kind of like to highlight or talk?
No, that's really the biggest one. The only other increase really is our workers' comp insurance, but that goes up every year just because our wages go up. But our moderate is still below industry average. We're still at a, we're at a point nine percent this year. So, we're ten percent below average. So, we're still doing a great job on that.
Can you remind me why your, what went into the budget here is about two hundred thousand dollars less than the department request?
Yeah, actually, we already did the fire department contract. So, when I presented my initial budget, we hadn't settled that contract yet. We have already transferred that money to the fire department.
Gotcha.
So, we reduced it.
I got you.
At the level.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, that, so, I just remembered that the increases, so the increases in union contracts are reflected in this department?
For the outstanding contracts that haven't been negotiated yet.
Okay. But you said the fire contract happened.
Since we've already ratified that one.
So, this would be which union still?
We have the public works union and the AFSMI union outstanding.
Okay.
And this line also covers, like, if we have a department head renegotiate their contract, we try to keep some money in there for those kinds of increases as well.
Okay.
Any questions for human resources? Seeing none. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Bobby Joe. Joel?
I.T. All right. Good evening, sir.
How you doing?
So, I'll let, same deal, Joel speak. There's a couple lines here that are, you know, moved a little bit, but overall, nothing too crazy here. But Joel, anything you want to kind of highlight?
Yeah, I'm going to say fairly, fairly flat. We went down in a couple. We went up on a couple. As is typical, my big ask is always for software. I manage the software for the entire city. It's not broken down by department, so it just falls to me. So, that's your Microsoft products, all the stuff that every department uses day to day. Telephone service that went down a little bit. As we're able to get rid of a few of our old copper lines that are becoming very expensive. Nobody wants to do that anymore, so they're basically trying to price people out of old copper lines. We still have a couple of elevators. And I'm working on some solutions to find a more modern way to manage that. So, hopefully, we can get that number down even just a little bit more. Other than that, a little bit of a reduction in network maintenance. The ask for the current year was for an anticipated project for pole transfers, hoping that actually happens this year. I'm not expecting that next year, so that's the reason for the reduction there. And just a little bit of reduction in equipment replacement. Yeah. Unless you have any questions. I don't think there's a whole lot there, really.
The one thing that stands out to me is the camera repair, which looks like it's a new item.
Yeah, we broke that out just so that it's kind of by itself because we've got so many more cameras now, kind of keeping it separate from just regular equipment.
Okay. Thanks.
May not have been here. Is that, some of those the ones along the waterfront that were installed?
Yes, that does include that.
That project was put in, what, three years ago, two and a half years ago? And there wasn't any maintenance line necessarily. So, in the discussions, we thought it would be clearer on maintaining and upgrading the servers and the wiring and the cameras themselves, that if we could show it separately so that you could see what it's costing throughout the community.
Where was that folded in before?
Equipment, equipment, equipment replacement or repair, wherever it fit or professional services.
You lowered your network maintenance and repair five thousand, which shifted. And I think we added the five thousand to it because of the new camera systems, actually, if I remember our discussions, Joel.
Right. Depending on what the issue with the cameras are, maybe it's a network maintenance thing or maybe it's actual hardware replacement thing.
All right. Any questions for information technology? Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you for doing your job really well, Joel.
Okay, thanks.
And that concludes this evening. Oh, you want to say?
You can.
I just wanted to echo what Brian said. Sarah has been a tremendous help during the budget season and trying to learn more about the process and help with the calculations. And it's really been much needed during this season, so I really appreciate it. And I didn't want to go forward without me recognizing her, too.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Before we move on, any members of the public wish to have any comments with regard to the workshop? Any questions about the departments we spoke to this evening?
I just want to comment. It was really easy to follow through because even when the new department with the customer service, I'm like, okay, this doesn't add up. But I was able to go back and match it up and see exactly the new department that you guys created. So, I want to thank you guys really. It was a pleasure going through it.
And I want to, I should have mentioned that instead of having the two different places that showed expenditures that they had last year and two different revenue, which you were flopping behind administration to one and forward, I said, "I'm not going to have that." So, we took all of those and combined it on one revenue sheet that showed the breakdown and totaled them up for you and one expenditure sheet, and then tied that into the summary so that you weren't flopping between different documents. We also put third parties, which are your outside requests, on a special budget page. And we have outside agencies, which are funded as a group. And what those are are outside agencies, but they are an extension of what the town is doing. So, they would be your growth council, your KV COG, any of those main municipal association that don't really belong to one department. They function on behalf of the whole city. And so, we didn't want to tie it to administration because it's really not just an administrative expense. So, we have those all grouped together in one place so you clearly can see what you are funding and you don't have to go look under administration and then under outside agencies for part of it and wonder where the rest of it is. So, hopefully, we get better every year and you find it easier because that's our goal, is to make it an easy-to-follow budget.
Compared to 2021 or 2022, Jesus, yeah, you've come a long way.
All right. Any members of the public? Seeing none. Okay. Thank you very much. Resume this again on Thursday for our next budget workshop. And just have to stay here tonight. It's pretty nice. All right. Okay. Okay, we will move right into our regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterville City Council. There are agendas available on the table near the entrance or online on the city's website. Consent agenda items are routine items, which are voted on in one motion and vote. Unfinished or new business items are voted on separately. Councillors will be given an opportunity for questions or comments, followed by citizens who must speak at the podium and identify themselves. Citizens will be allowed to speak one time per agenda item for up to three minutes. Citizens who wish to speak on a topic that does not appear on tonight's agenda will have the opportunity to do so during the public comment section of the agenda for up to three minutes. Pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first, disclosure of conflict of interest. Any conflict of interest for any councillors for any of the votes that they will take this evening? Okay, seeing none. First on our agenda this evening is a presentation from Washington Heights LLC with regard to a TIF proposal. Are those, I saw them here, so they are here. Hi, Regan. She can sit right at the table. That's fine. Okay. Thank you.
My name's John Jarbert, Jr., or senior back there on the business floor.
My name's John Jarber Jr., or Senior back there on the business part.
Hit the mic.
Flip that, yeah, sorry.
John Jarber, John Jarber Jr., my father, my business partner's in the back, John Senior.
And I'm Reagan LaRochelle, with LaRochelle Consulting. I'm working with the Jarbers on this project.
First, thank you, everybody, for their time. I know that we were able to reach out to others earlier this week, and thank you for that time as well. You know, first and foremost, want to just extend how excited that my father and I are about this project. It's been about three years in the making. I'm fourth generation in Waterville, so I'm living in Portland, but the, everything a developer or builder's supposed to not do, and being emotionally excited about something, I am, so I apologize for that. Coming back home to do a project after 15 years is pretty exciting for me, so. With this project, mistakenly three years ago, there's rumors and builds on what we were going to do. You know, openly, I'll admit, we had dropped in, you know, a project that did not look like this beautiful building, that's taken us some time to develop. On Washington Ave, you know, it's the entrance to a number of things, from Kobe College to Waterville off 95, to Mount Mersey, where I grew up, ride my bike back there. It wasn't a good feeling when we put this building together, what it originally looked like, which was the dormitory style, stuff it in, pack it out. And as I did more research with my father, our team Reagan worked with, you know, City of Waterville, that's not necessarily what we felt the need was, so we went back to the drawing board. And this is a true drawing and design, what we'll show you tonight to go through. And as we get into what's needed for this project to get it done, Reagan will get into the TIF side.
Mr. Jarber?
Yes, of course.
That's a, a drawing, or that's a, a building in another location?
No, that is a drawing that we've created in this generation and world, AI. However, we've given it to our...
Sure, sure, I just, I didn't know if this was a model he had somewhere else.
No, but it is something that we're excited to use about in the future in the City of Waterville, but it will be used specifically for this project for the first time. Yep. So we can bounce to the next slide. Let's give you some highlights of this project. The invest, total investment's going to be around $51 million, or 15, I apologize, I wish it was 51, 15 is what we're comfortable at. This is a two-phase project currently by the planning board, approved for Phase One at 28 units. As I spoke about earlier, the style we were looking at did not fit this city, what was needed, and what we were trying to accomplish. So with the 28 units, we'll get into the layout of that. It will total 28 units. We're going to be, and we can get, we'll get into that a little bit, it'll be into a rental pool. This will be all rental, and that's what's been approved by the planning board currently. This is an at-market rental pool. And what I mean for that is with our researches, there's a need for the professors, professors' families of Kobe, the nurses out of Augusta, the professionals, an at-market rental, but we need this TIF that we're discussing to be able to make this build happen financially. And just full disclosure, if I'm unable to get this TIF, I'm not going to be able to finance, and it's a part of my contingency with Andrew Scoggan Bank, who has backed us in this project as a whole. You can see that we have a quote from 2019, when we first started talking about this project. I kept this in place, because it's very interesting to me, because the need has just grown, even though it's from 2019 with the current mayor. You know, there's a housing crisis throughout the country. There's a massive housing crisis in Waterville, and we're hoping to be a part of fixing that in this city, and we're really excited about that. We can go to the next slide. Again, this is the building design that you're asking about. This is what our buildings are going to look like. There'd be three entries in the front, and two private entries for the other. This is a five-unit building, and we'll, again, show you what the other buildings will look like, but they'll be mimicked that as well. We can go to the next slide, please. Rear elevation. Again, creating something that's of quality, while also being able to, you know, stay at an affordable rate, the TIF is a big part of that, but we got away from just doing that singular building and stuffing people into it. This is going to be a beautiful development, in a location that deserves it, that a lot of people are going to see, and that we want to be able to, when the professors, like I said, are coming up to Kobe, being recruited to be brought back in, we believe it's going to at least give them that gap year that I call, that other cities might have from a rental pool standpoint, where they come in, they see a beautiful building, they can rent, they can stay with their families there, it's a two- and three-bedroom option, and then they're going to buy in Waterville, they're going to stay in Waterville. And that's a really important thing to understand, because our goal would be to put this in place, so that we can bring other avenues of revenue by having people want to live in this city. The rental pool piece, I think, is a big part of that. It is in cities like Portland that I have, it's extremely expensive and out of control. I'm very excited to not be working there on this project. But again, you look at the design that we put together, we weren't just throwing a singular building together. This is the end elevation with a private entry, you know, full daylight basement, same idea. If we go to the next, you can kind of see how, it's a two-floor layout, just so you have an idea. So these are 1,200, 1,300 square foot in the middle, two floors, very good size, perfect setup for, you know, families and things like that. Skip through that. The site layout. One back. Thank you. Don't be, don't be. So keep in mind, this is a two-phase planning board-approved project currently. We are looking to TIF the entire property, so we don't have to come back to the drawing board twice on this, and the planning board will obviously make the decision. You'll see from left to right, it's buildings 1, 2, 3, 4, and then that back right building be the last piece. Sorry, just be easy. So in Phase 1, it's building 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. Engineer, Mayor Ty, business school.
What's the, the, the one at the very end?
That is Phase 2, 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. It's of the larger buildings, so there's one of each that would have more units in each phase.
Okay.
Okay. So the first part that I showed you on what we're calling the sou, southern side, is what has been approved by planning board, excluding the large building on the bottom. It's the end building that, you know, after conversation, they felt was a better build out. So that's the layout. Again, the structural build and everything, engineering we put behind it, DEP, we'll get to in the next slide as well. We've worked with Boyd Snowden, so, who's out of Oakland, engineer there, he's doing all of our engineering. Reason I bring that up, again, sorry, it's easier if I go after. We're doing a couple of special things on this project.
John?
Yeah? So people can do... That's why we have this. Terrible singer, but it's right. Should be right. Hopefully. We're doing a couple of special things on this project. We have the right of way back here to bring in our sewer line. However, my father and I, my father, made the decision that if we're actually doing this for the City of Waterville, we're actually going to speak true to what we want to do. We believe from an infrastructure standpoint, pulling the sewer line from here up Washington Ave, which is not in place now, there are leach fields, this is not available for proper development in the future. My father and I are going to dedicate our funding from our project to pull this up Washington Ave, allowing neighbors, allowing other tenants, or future developments that are allowed by city council and planning board to tie into, and getting this fixed, allowing our, you know, neighbors over here to tie into that. We had the ability to do a shorter run here. We're going to invest in it, as we wanted to, to the city, and to allow this to be a better development site. The other big piece of this, that when we went through planning board was a big question, was the drainage piece of it. This is all of the dirt and everything that was pulled from Home Depot was dumped on this piece of property. There's going to be excavation piece. Boyd Snowden's done a great job of working with DEP, putting a schedule together, how the environmental's going to be affected by this. What also ended up happening when we did the whole study is the natural drainage is on the southern-eastern side. When we went through planning board, we met with every single one of these neighbors up through here, to make sure that they understood what was going on, see what their problems were, so on and so forth. We're going to fix current problems that they already actually have from a drainage standpoint. We have the natural drainage, plus what Mr. Boyd has done from an engineered standpoint right here, on what the drainage will do as well. It's actually going to dry out pieces of this side of the property, which are just soaked. I can't think of her name, thrilled that her rose garden is not going to be soaked in the summertime, things like that. So that's why we wanted to show you this piece. As we've seen other developments in other towns and things, it was just about the development itself. We did put some thought into the area where we're landing, what we're doing to our neighbors, so on and so forth. It did come at an extra cost, but we feel that it was the important and right thing to do, as we want to continue to do work in the city. Next slide. Real briefly, it was about a year ago, we sat in the same room, we had a zone change that was needed for the property, just wanted to make everybody aware of it. And I can't speak to this as well as Reagan, so I'm going to pass it off to her.
Great, thank you. Should I move this over?
Yeah.
So, to talk more, to talk generally about tax increment financing, and then bring it down to this project, please interrupt me with any questions that you might have as we're going through. But it's always helpful to give councillors and the public a, an overview of tax increment financing, because it is certainly, it's a very powerful tool for municipalities, but it is not an intuitive concept. So people often need to hear it two or three or four more times to, to understand it. So please stop me with any questions that you might have. But as you, as I heard in your budget discussion prior to this, the city already has 14 TIF districts, so some of you are familiar and have probably voted on different TIF districts throughout the city in the past. And what a, a TIF district is, it is actually a physical boundary that is laid out on your tax map. So it's, it's a finite location in your, in your city, where the city is looking to incentivize development, or target development, or investment. So the way that tax increment financing works is that a developer, in this case, or a business that might be expanding, is looking to add value to the city by building capital investment. And so within the boundary of the TIF district, there are some special circumstances that allow that investment to be advantageous for both the city and for the developer in circumstances like this, where there is a gap that needs to be filled in financing, or as I said, the city wants to kind of direct investment in certain areas. They can incentivize that with a TIF district. So we can move to the next slide, please. And again, just as a reminder, this lot is on your tax rolls currently at a certain value, and when a TIF district is created on that lot, the base value, the value that it is right now, remains the same, and the tax revenue will flow into the city's general fund throughout the term of the TIF district. What we're talking about, when we're talking about TIF revenue, are the taxes on the new value that's being created on that property. And TIF districts are special in that during, if the city sets up a TIF district, the new val, the, the base value, as you can see on that slide, the, the clear rectangle, that is the value that the state and the county will see as the value of that property during the 30-year term of your TIF district. And that's very advantageous for the city in a number of ways. But first, before we get to that, you can see that on this graph here, the new value that the developer would be creating on that property would be in green, and then those taxes are what we're talking about when we're talking about TIF revenues. So this is nothing that the city is taking out of their general fund and providing to a developer. It's something that the developer, the developer's the one who needs to create the value and the new tax dollars when we're talking about a TIF district. Does anyone have any questions about that? Okay. Next slide, please. So the reason why it's always important or helpful for a city to consider a TIF district is when we're talking about tax shifts. And again, during budget season, councils can often appreciate this maybe more than in other times of the year. But basically, as I said, when you create a TIF district, the base value of that property before any new investment is on it, is what the state and the county will view, will view as the property value during that 30 years. So there could be a $20 million increase in value on that property, but for state funding formulas and county funding formulas, it will still be that base value that you started with. And that's important, because as you know, your municipal valuation factors into at least three important formulas that affect the city. The first one would be the aid to education, so as your city gets richer, the state takes the opinion that you need less in aid to education, so that decreases as your municipal valuation goes up. The same thing with the revenue sharing. A more affluent city with a higher valuation would receive less in the revenue sharing than a city with less valuation. And then finally, with county taxes, which has been all, on all of our minds, as I live in Augusta, and we've all been watching our county tax bill, that valuation also, the, the municipalities that have a higher valuation pay a higher percentage of that county tax. So by sheltering that new value, essentially from those formulas, the City of Waterville is able to keep the whole tax dollar in the city, and you don't have to make up for losses in aid to education and revenue sharing, or pay more in your county taxes because of this project and the new value associated with it. Does that make sense? Great. Okay, so we'll move on to the next slide. So, and I pulled this out of the presentation, because I wanted to give you a big picture of it, because the numbers get pretty small on these revenue projections. So this is a revenue projection that is required as part of a TIF application for the state. Many of you have seen these before. But basically, what we're talking about here, if you go to the third column, is the, this is the new value that would be created within the TIF district that we're talking about. And you can see that in year fiscal year '27, Washington Heights, if, if all goes well with this project, they're looking to have Phase One done by the end of the construction season this year. So that new value would be on, you know, part of the TIF district as of your next tax season, and then the subsequent year for Phase Two. So looking at that new value times your mill rate, at this point, we kept it simple, just at 20 mills, over on column 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, you can see the calculation of the new tax revenue that would be generated because of this development. The next column is the capture. Sometimes cities don't want to shield the whole value from those funding formulas. I usually recommend that you do, so I kept it this way, just for these purposes. If you wanted some of this money to go into your general fund, that's something we can certainly talk about, but usually, cities want to be able to shield all of the new revenue. So we get to the column that talks about TIF revenues, and then, as John indicated, the piece of this that is so important is that there is a gap in this project at this point in terms of funding, and a credit enhancement agreement is truly, the name is what it is. It's, it's the means of enhancing one's credit in order to be able to go to the bank and get financing for a project. So what the developer's requesting in this instance is a 100% reimbursement of new taxes for years 1 through 15, and then followed by a 50% reimbursement in years 16 through 30. Waterville's TIF policy... Waterville's TIF policy over the term of the credit enhancement agreement does not allow for more than a 75% reimbursement, and so that's what this would be for this project. Does anyone have any questions on that?
Yeah, just a few. I mean, I guess it's probably you trying to be just straightforward and simple with the numbers, I'm imagining, but there's no, in terms of just going through this, that the real assessed value, there's no depreciation or appreciation in that number.
No, no, there's not. So yes, you would, you would want, I know that Waterville has a revale in the next year or so maybe, so, you know, every 10 years, you would look for that real property value to probably increase by a certain percentage, 20 or 30% for, well, for residential, it might be more for, for this time around. But yes, and also the mil rate, you know, I could have given a more real, yeah, I could have given a more realistic projection, but I like to keep it simple for, you know, for, for the council presentation. I can certainly work it up to a more kind of realistic projection of your mil rate based on, you know, how much it's been going up in the past five years and projected revale, if that would be helpful.
And the, the 75% reimbursement to the contractor, the structure that you have here, is that in any way dictated by the state, the way that, that, it's, it's not, that's just, those numbers, the way you have them laid out where it's 100% reimbursement for 50% of the term of the, of the TIF, can you talk about the financials of that a little bit, the necessity of, of front-loading?
Well, the, these properties aren't going to be sold off, obviously. You know, when you have a housing development, for example, where you're selling off units, it's easier for a developer to be able to recoup some of those early costs. You know, John was talking about, I think there's 200 trees that are going to be planted, the infrastructure coming up Washington Street, the fill that's on the property right now, there's, there's some sort of soil, I mean, sorry, I'll let him get to that part of it.
To speak what I believe you're getting at in this point is, because it's a rental program and what we're trying to do with that market, our pro forma really is for phase one. This isn't, this is, allows us to stay a touch cash positive in, in the short half. And by putting the TIF in this way, you know, it was more of an ask of myself and, you know, my finance person who looks at it is, we're able to do this phase one by this process and this equation. I'm unable to make it happen. The bank won't sign off on it unless I front-load it this way because it's rental instead of being able to, at times, sell off 50% and take the other 50%.
So this structure is being dictated by the bank that you're going through?
It's being dictated by myself to be able to cash flow it, and that's how I presented it to our bank, to have them feel warm and fuzzy.
I get you.
I have a question. So I don't know if you've mentioned it already, what are you looking for, like rental ranges for these units?
So our rental ranges will be from, anywhere from 1,500 to 2,200 a month. Our square footages on those will be from 900 to 1,200 a square foot.
Are there any other questions right now? If, if not, I'm, I'm going to ask you to move forward on the slide, but I may have, I guess I can ask the councilors to look at their sheets. But I also wanted to show you the tax shift that I was talking about earlier with this development and the value that would be created on this property and the taxes associated with that. So the, as we saw on the previous revenue projection, the total new taxes projected would be 4.3 million essentially. And you can see down at the bottom corner of the tax shift analysis, which shows the shift in education because, how much less you would receive in aid to education each year, how much less you would receive in revenue sharing each year, and how much your county taxes would go up per year with that new value on your municipal valuation. The total tax shift would be about $3.2 million over that 30-year period. So while you would be collecting 4.3 million from the new project, because of making up for those tax shifts, you would be losing essentially $3.2 million of that, which, which happens to be a 74% tax shift. And again, usually municipalities are hitting around 50 to 60% of a tax shift, but because of the increases that we've been seeing in the Kennebec County budget, that percentage increase has been a little bit skewed in the past few years. I take an average of the increase in the county budget to help calculate this, and because there've been larger jumps recently, that may account for some of that higher-than-normal projection. But essentially, now with the information we have now, this is the, this is what we are looking at for a tax shift with that new value. Okay.
Wonderful. Any other questions? Councilor?
Yeah, just one more question. So the first, the first phase is 28 units, correct? So have you done any sort of market research or any kind of idea of like filling those units?
Sure.
Basically, for lack of better?
Yes. We, we've worked with City Waterville Economic Growth on, you know, some studies that have been done. We did that with the planning board over a year ago, and we talked about the zone change and the need for it. We've also, we have a smaller unit in Oakland, right on the town line, the other side of 295, that have about 75 people waiting to move into a 1,200 square foot unit. That's kind of what sparked this years ago. There's, we feel, speaking with the city, you know, there is a huge need for this. We also hope, hope that we're creating even more of a need by having a quality product like this. Our goal is to, you know, as I had said, create a situation where there are the nurses from Augusta who, I have a marketing team for my other businesses that will be leveraging, I'll be leveraging to put this out there, website, and not just putting, you know, geographic pin in Waterville, spreading that out to Augusta and Oakland, retaining individuals, professionals to come into Waterville because they can have bias, think a beautiful place to live and a beautiful neighborhood and, you know, see what Waterville was when I was a kid and, you know, bring some more families and, you know, professionals here. So, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
So what is the property value now?
Property value now? Sorry. What was your property valued at now, Washington? What was the last valuation?
300,000.
300,000.
A very quick question. Have you talked to the, any of the surrounding neighbors, businesses, or anything in regards to this project and how it may affect their business or the, you know, where people live?
Yeah, so just before our, speaking from the business standpoint, in the planning board just before us was a, a new restaurant that's going to be going in. They were discussing their parking and whatnot. They came over after, said how excited they were, obviously from a business standpoint. We're far enough off of, you know, KMD area that it's not, from a DOT traffic standpoint, it's bringing more people that way for the newer businesses that are going in there. There's the availability by Dunkin' Donuts that's going. From the residential surrounding, that was probably the proudest moment I had in showing this drawing from what it was three years ago. They couldn't be happier about it. There were some individuals that had concerns, and we gave some concessions, fences, trees. They deserve that. And, you know, like I said, there was a legitimate concern about a rose garden that had been there for 50 years by one of our neighbors. We're actually going to be helping with the drainage for that. So every neighbor, for the most part, you know, almost all the way there, except for the one individual who ended up with a fence and a trees, who I think they were happy because I gave them both, that are extremely excited about it. They're excited to not see this dropped-in monstrosity of what they originally thought it was and to see something that, you know, we're going to build there, build a community, not a dormitory. So, yeah, there was a lot of positive that we got after leaving that last planning board. Unanimous vote, yeah.
I like the look. I'm not going to lie, I did like the underground parking before. That was, that was really kind of a cool feature, but no, I get it. Like, this is good. Any other questions for the council?
I have.
For the council? From the council?
From the council, yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry.
Go ahead and I'll, I'll, I'll wait.
Well, looking at your site layout here, my, even with glasses, my eyes aren't quite that good, but it, it sort of appears at the end of that cul-de-sac that there is sort of an, a dead end to the, to the street on the, what is that, like north, the northern, northwestern corner? I'm on slide eight. And so my question is, you know, do you own any of the adjacent parcels? Do you have any plans to own any of the adjacent parcels? Is this, is that sort of designed for an expansion, although it seems like that's backing up onto those other properties there?
No, there's a natural cul-de-sac, if you will, in between that that is unable to be touched. If you can see the black lines at the top where the tree line's going to be, but the answer is no. Because of the elevation, the extra dirt, what we've budgeted for, what you see is phase one. We haven't taken phase two to the planning board yet. That would be right behind it once we get one of the buildings up. What you see here is what we're going to put on there.
I'm not, I'm, so I'm asking about a phase three? There's not some?
Not at this site.
Yeah.
No. Again, that goes back to my gut feeling of putting some, stuffing a bunch of things in here. This with the TIF, with the TIF, is a profitable project that we can create a at-market creation, but we can't get anything more in here. From an adjacent standpoint, it's, you know, all generational homes. And if you go to the right side, it's, it's not something that's buildable for us, and we don't own it.
All right. Yes.
So I want to commend you on the evolution of the project. It really does look like a wonderful, thoughtful project, and certainly I'm eager to see it come to pass, for sure, as we all are. I'm just struggling a little bit with the, you know, the, the formula of the 75%, because just to be blunt, you know, we have to pay our bills too, and our taxpayers are really struggling. So the benefits of housing are many, and of course, primarily, it's providing adequate places for people to live. And, but it also brings, increases the tax revenue. So I'm just putting it out there. I'd, I'd really like to see if there's any wiggle room here at all that we could work with so that we see some sort of return sooner than 15 years out.
I 100% respect that from Waterville. I totally get it. And seeing kind of what Kobe's done and, you know, with the investment in here and, you know, brought it to such an amazing place. I can't answer that directly right this second, you know, we have spent almost two and a half years on this. The financing and banking side in this climate is very difficult. The understanding that this TIF doesn't get out is not given until we put the risk to finish the project. And because we only have a phase one approved, that's very difficult for me to answer and say that I can manipulate this. You know, this is what we put together from a number and equation standpoint. I understand it's a, it's a big ask, and I, and I get that. It is a very rare opportunity that I would say that it's a project that I've done that's a win-win situation from a housing crisis to a product that, you know, you said is not what we originally talked about and that even our neighbors are happy about. To create this prod, this project at the amount of money we need to borrow and what the entrance of Washington Heights deserves, this is what we were able to create for a pro forma that our bank accepted at this time.
Can you remind me what was on? Oh, I'm sorry. You go ahead.
So, yeah, I think you might have just touched on it, but I kind of like, based off what she said, so are you saying then that at this mo, at this point in time, the bank is going, they're agreeing based on these numbers in front of us?
At this time, this is what they've agreed upon. Conversations are always available. I would say one of the more difficult things we have at this moment is timing. Maine is very seasonal. And we've waited a long time, and partly that's on us, you know, for improper design in the beginning, but planning board has taken us some time and held off meetings, and this is going to take some time, a couple of meetings. Going back to the drawing board pushes us out over a year. We have a lot of cost in upfront right now, as of today. So this is what we're comfortable presenting and, of course, discussing. I understand your, your side of it, for sure. And I think that the city, your group, as, you know, councilors, it's your job to ask those tough questions, but do, do we want to partner and do this thing together? I do feel like it's partnership with the city. And if the product and what we're bringing and what you believe in it will bring, will balance that out, I think that's respectfully up to your group as a whole.
Okay. All right, so next steps. There are a few more people that I, I need you to speak with to run this program through. One is, is our finance department and the assessor. I know you've met with Paul when the exception, so we have Ally in place now, so I want this to go through. They will then meet with all the folks that you've met with already. I know you've spoken with the city manager code and things like that, and they will put together a recommendation for the council, which we will review at a, at another meeting. So what we'll do is we'll have Sarah reach out to you and set those other meetings up so that we can get those on the books and we can have that conversation.
Thank you so much for your time.
You're very welcome.
So much more enjoyable than being in Portland, I'll be honest with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Moving on to our city manager report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Impact Task Force members are all selected, and we do have our first organizational meeting now scheduled for April 8th at 2:00 PM right here in the City Hall Annex. And this meeting is open to the public for observation. I don't think there will be necessarily a public comment period, but it is a meeting that's open to the public for people to observe. We'll be taking some more steps on this tonight, but we're excited to continue our paving project. I see John and our public works director here this evening. So this year, as you may remember, we do have a five-year roads plan. This year, there is going to be paving and a rebuilding of Burley Street, Park Street, Avril Terrace, and a number of smaller side streets. Yes, there's going to be some excitement about some of these projects this year. So we hope to continue this work in 2026 and beyond with adequate funding, and I just do want to say, this is a huge priority for the city, our infrastructure, maintaining our infrastructure, employing catch-up in some of the deferred maintenance. So we're excited for these paving projects this year. It's going to be great. Some of these roads are in pretty tough shape right now, but it's important to be mindful, this needs to continue in the future. We need more funding in the future, and let's stick to the plan that we have developed because it's really important for the city when we talk about a whole number of things, from economic development, recreation, we're talking about sidewalks also. This is, this is important stuff. So looking forward to these projects this year. Our Street Tree Task Force is going to be having another meeting this month to talk about our plan for this year. We're going to be talking with Bartlett Tree about getting a tree census underway, and hopefully later this year, some initial very targeted areas of planting in some neighborhoods that have the most limited amounts of tree cover. We're also going to be talking more about better ways to involve the community in this project, for example, adopt a tree-type programs that would allow some more community buy-in into this project with actual trees. So more updates on that to come. We'll be meeting the next couple of weeks, that group. My next city manager's open office hours will be April 7th, 3:30 to 5:30, right here at the City Hall Annex. All Waterville residents, local business owners are welcome and encouraged to attend, share their thoughts, views, concerns, or anything else they'd like to share with me. I do want to say thank you to everyone who came out to speak with me at the Muske Center last time. We had a good, a good event there. Some upcoming community events, just to be aware of, on April 9th, there's a Meet the Reps event at 5:30 PM at Brick's Coworking. Reps event at 5:30 PM at Brick's Co-Working, on April 16th, there's a Business After Hours, 5:30 to 7 at the Main State Credit Union, and on April 19th is the South End Cleanup, 8:00 AM, South End Boat Ramp Parking Lot, that's always a great event, a couple times a year. Couple other just things I wanted to mention real quick, there is going to be some water district construction work on Summer and Grove Street, this year, these water mains are well over 100 years old, and are needing, needing replacement, so this construction is gonna be lasting until approximately the end of fall or October of 2025, there will be traffic detours, so they're asking that you seek alternate routes, such as Water Street or Silver Street when possible, and there will be some more information forthcoming on that. And lastly, very important, May 12th this year is Bulk Waste Pickup Day, very popular in Waterville, but there is a 10-item limit this year, an item is considered up to one standard 32-gallon trash can, so still quite a bit of volume, but I know last year, we had some extreme volume out there that unfortunately is necessitating these limits in place. But again, May 12th, have all your stuff out at the curb by 7:00 AM, I know it's a big day in Waterville, so, thank you.
Okay. Back here. Council comments or committee reports? Any council who have any committee reports at this point?
I don't have a report, but I do have a comment about the Inland Hospital representative, they will be here next week.
On the 15th, yeah, the next meeting.
The next meeting.
Yep.
So, the president, Lisa's not gonna be here, but the president and the administrative, they're gonna be here.
Yep. Okay. Next up, youth council.
I'm Joshua Schmazl with the Waterville Youth Council.
I'm Owen Bill Tate with the Waterville Youth Council.
Made some pretty good progress over the last few weeks, our Instagram subcommittee has been preparing some very nice-looking formats for our future posts on our Instagram account, our arts subcommittee has been making a, a civil, how do I put it, civic engagement-themed art project, and they've been putting that together gradually, it's been going very well. We also heard from Patty Dubois, the city clerk, about her experience working in our municipal government, that was really nice, and that's about it.
All right. Yeah, well, the other, we're still working, and we're gonna start promoting the job fair at the AYCC and volunteer fair, that is on May 3rd, Saturday, May 3rd, and I believe it's from 10 to 1, so still active engagement in that, and we will start to promote that ongoing, so. Okay, moving on to public comment. Anyone here wish to make a public, yes, ma'am, please. Yes, yeah.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Bella Surtivan, I am a student at Thomas College, I'm supposed to be here with my advisor, Matt Gilly, but he had to leave, so I'm just gonna give you a quick little overview, we at Thomas College have a summit on expansion of rail in Maine, and we have a couple of flyers, if anyone's interested, there's some here, and I think there's some over there at the entrance, there's a QR code on the back to sign up, we're gonna have some really exciting speakers to talk about expanding rail in Maine, and yeah, I just wanted to formally invite anyone who would like to come, it's on April 23rd at Thomas College, and yeah, let me know if you have any other questions, or feel free to email or text Matt Gilly, I've been told that most of you know him. So, yes, yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
When on the 23rd, is it?
Uh, that's a good question.
Want, you wanna hand me those?
Up to 3:00 PM.
You wanna hand me those, I'll slide them down, thank you. All right. One, two, three. Yeah.
Any questions, or?
No, I think that's great, thank you, Bella.
Awesome, thank you so much.
You bet. Anyone else wishing to make a public comment this evening? Patty, anyone online? Dee, anyone?
No hands raised.
No hands raised, okay. We will move on to the consent agenda, can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to old business, order 69, 2025.
Can we have a motion to read by title?
Yes, ma'am, we can.
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, order 69, 2025.
Accept property donation, map 32, lot 8, Paul Avenue.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion with regard to this second reading? Seeing none, roll call?
Counsel Gilly?
Yes.
Counsel DeBrito?
Yes.
Counsel Klepack?
Yes.
Counsel Green?
Yes.
Counsel Krigbaum?
Yes.
Counsel Harad?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor and zero opposed.
All right, thank you, moving on to order 70, 2025.
Accept property donation, map 32, lot 11, and map 51, lot 149, Paul Avenue and Riverview Street.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any comment, any discussion with regard to this one? Seeing none, Patty, roll call, please.
Counsel Gilly?
Yes.
Counsel DeBrito?
Yes.
Counsel Klepack?
Yes.
Counsel Green?
Yes.
Counsel Krigbaum?
Yes.
Counsel Harad?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor and zero opposed.
All right, wonderful. Moving on to order 71, 2025.
Purchase property, map 32, lot 6, Paul Avenue.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion or comments with regard to this order? Seeing none. Patty, can I get a roll call for this one, please?
Counsel Gilly?
Yes.
Counsel DeBrito?
Yes.
Counsel Klepack?
Yes.
Counsel Green?
Yes.
Counsel Krigbaum?
Yes.
Counsel Harad?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor and zero opposed.
Wonderful, thank you. Moving on to resolution 74, 2025.
Approve contract for fixed-price gasoline FY26.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay.
And I will make an amendment to add the details here, that the contract will be made with Rinaldi Energy Saco Maine for the fixed price of 2.11 per gallon.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion with regard to the motion? Okay, all those in favor of the amendment?
And now, move as amended.
Move as amended? All those in favor?
We need a motion first and a second, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, move as amended, right.
And now.
Now, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to new business, resolution 85, 2025.
Approve the appointment of the acting city manager.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay, I think this is, this is the, I think, the first step, I know we got our packets with all of the candidates, which we'll talk about later this week, and start that process, but this is another part of the process, is to determine the need and whether or not who we want to appoint, I know we have a person that we've met last, the last meeting, so I will open this up to, you know, any discussion at this point.
Mr. Mayor, should we put the amendments on the table prior to discussion?
Sure, that's a great idea, thank you.
So, we had a few suggestions from our city solicitor that were added, and can we amend by substitution, or should I read those aloud?
We could amend by substitution, I'm happy to read them if you'd like.
Well, it would be great if you read them, and then everyone can hear what they are.
Okay. So, in section 6 dot 2, replacing the word attorney to solicitor two times, and instead of their recommendation, changing their to his, and then in 6.3, changing they shall exercise to he shall exercise, and section 8.1, striking out, either party may terminate this contract at any time, with or without cause, with prior written notice to the other party, provided however, a party terminating this contract will endeavor to give two weeks' advance notice of such termination unless such notice is not reasonable or prudent under the circumstances. That's the end of the strikeout, and it's replaced with the following language, the position of acting city manager is a temporary position with no reasonable expectation of continued employment, this contract is terminable by either party upon two weeks' written notice to the other party.
We also have insurance coverage 5.1, with the tort.
Thank you, oh, thank you. Tort, changing claim to tort, thank you. I apologize, I missed that one. So, if we, there is a motion to amend by substitution?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you.
And now, we can move, move as amended?
I'll move as amended.
Second.
And all those in favor? Thank you. Okay, I now turn it over to you. Any, any discussion?
I mean, I, I guess if we need to discuss, we need a city manager, so I don't want anybody interrupted in regards to the work, in the, the quality work that we're doing here in the city, so, until we get a new city manager, we need an interim one.
Yeah, I, I agree, I think it's important to have this position in place as soon as Brian leaves us, and this individual comes highly recommended, you know, some of us have met him and know him, I, I think it's, it's a great choice to help bridge the gap between the old and incoming city manager, outgoing and incoming.
Okay. Any other discussion? Any members of the public, any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor? All right, thank you very much, moving on to resolution 86, 2025.
Approve the memorandum of understanding, understanding with Waterville Creates for a semi-permanent public art installation at Levine's Park.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion with this one?
I had a question.
Counsel DeBrito.
With this one, like, what is the cost on the maintenance, like, overall, like, every year, what is the cost to the city?
That is a great question, one I did pose to you, Meg, I don't know if you wanna, I did forward your, your, your reply to, to the council, but certainly, if you want to add anything you want to add.
Right, so initially, it'll be, it'll be some, well, we're gonna help install, you know, they're gonna bring in a crane, they're big items, I don't know how familiar you guys are with them, but they're big items, so they're gonna bring in the heavy-moving equipment, but we're gonna prepare the sites, you know, we're gonna level things out with a skid steer and put some crushed stone in, similar to the river stone down at the head of falls, it'll be similar layout-wise, but annually, councillor, it should be, you know, if everything goes the way that we expect, and it's not vandalized, and cars don't run into it, there should be, there should be no maintenance. You're right, we don't, we didn't, we don't anticipate maintenance, no.
I know, yeah, it's my fault.
Okay. My concern is the fact, you know, I understand it's a little maintenance, but we need to obviously, you know, I'd like to be proactive instead of reactive, and obviously, you know, earlier today, we had, you know, we're starting the budget discussions, and, you know, there's gonna be a lot of, lot of discussion about saving money, and I just want to make sure that this isn't gonna cost the city and the hard-working taxpayers herein a lot of money, and, you know, I understand that it might not cost a lot, but, you know, things happen, and I just want to make sure that we're prepared with, you know, for those unknown costs.
Anyone else?
Well, no, you, you do it, go ahead.
Well, you know, I, I agree with, with Counsel Gilly, and, and yet, this is, this is a great opportunity for the city. My biggest question about cost would, would have to do with insurance, I don't know how that will be evaluated, but I think that's a number I'd like to have before I take a vote. Could you, could you speak to that?
I mean, we can certainly talk to our carrier, but I'm not sure other public art displays have been, for example, the light sentinels, have we had any interaction with our insurance carrier as far as?
No.
Yeah, so, to answer your question, we can certainly run this by our carrier to see what potentially could be involved, I think it's gonna be fairly small, if anything, but...
Okay.
What's the total value of, of these works of art?
Yeah, yeah, please, thank you.
The total value is 70,000, and so Waterville Creates will be paying for the cost, really, the MOU is a formality, the DOT was concerned if the license was terminated for any reason, whether there was a traffic pattern changed or something, because the DOT manages Levine's Park, or has a license with the city, I should say, you know, I'd like to think Waterville Creates is gonna be around in 10 years, but if not, the city's always gonna be here, so if they have to be moved or something, the city could manage that, I don't think costs for maintaining are going to be high, the artist also is in-state, he lives in Portland, so if it was needed to have him and involve him with any updates or maintenance, we could involve him as well. Any other questions?
I just wanted to make the comment that I think, you know, beyond the labor of department chief scans a few members of his team, and maybe at most, a dozen yards of crushed stone, you know, if, if there was a hit to the insurance, you're talking a couple hundred bucks a year, probably, on 70 grand.
Yeah.
So, on the other side of the ledger sheet, having really pretty whimsical, fun, cool pieces of public art that, that aren't just random, they, they do try to help us imagine the past that was here before people were, and so there's, there's a point to it, yeah, I, I, I think it's a pretty easy decision, actually, when you, when you think about it, given, like, the overall costs, it's, I'm pretty happy to be able to have something on, on an agenda where I get to vote for public art being installed in the city of Waterville at, that is being purchased by, you know, an entity like Waterville Creates that we are so fortunate to have in this city, it is, I, I think, in general, just a real opportunity to have a fun, happy story that we can tell here at, at city council, that's my, my perspective, so I'll, I'll be voting in favor of it. Thank you.
Counsel Krigbaum?
I just wanted to add to that and, and agree that I think the investment into public art displays in Waterville and general, the arts in Waterville as a whole, is an investment into the future of the city. If, you know, if a, if a child is playing on the whimsical statues or around the whimsical statues, and remembers that, they're going to remember that for their life, more than likely, and so they're going to associate Waterville with that, and the more beautiful we can make our city, be it with public art displays, murals, things like that, the more people want to come back to Waterville, because it leaves that impression, and that impression is something that makes, frankly, the, on the business side of things, people more likely to move here and pay taxes, to buy things, to do things like that, so it is an economic investment to do those things, and so I will also be voting in favor of this.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion from? Any other discussion from the council? Anyone from the public? Any hands up, Patty? All right. With that, then I will move to a vote. All those in favor? Thank you very much. All right, moving on to Resolution 872025.
Approve bid award for local paving and sidewalk project to Little Fields Construction.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All right, any, yeah, come on up, yeah, please.
Any questions, of course? Happy to answer. We're confident and excited to have Little Fields win the bid. Hopefully, we can accept it tonight. The amount includes a contingency, which is typical, 10%. They've done similar work for other municipalities, not ours.
Is this the first time for us?
As far as a large-scale road project, yes, they did, they were awarded the bid for the Appleton Street project just last year. So they did the paving there, they did all the, you know, the sidewalks and the planting, so we were very happy. The city engineer was very happy, we were all very happy with the work that they did. So, yeah, we're very confident, looking forward to having them here.
Any council comments?
Do you know when, and this may have been asked and answered already, but do you know when this project is going to begin, specifically?
Yeah, I'll have John Lombardi, our assistant engineer, come on.
Burley Street? Because Burley Street's a garbage.
So I can introduce John, well, he could introduce himself, but John's been with the city for over 20 years. He does all the bid specifications and RFPs for paving and sidewalks. He works with the utilities, making sure that everybody's on board. It's a fair amount of work to get the utilities on board with the projects that we're pushing. And he's also on-site each day during construction to make sure that, you know, all the needs are being met and they're doing what they're saying they're going to do. So this is John.
Nice to meet everybody. So, yeah, the pre-construction and utility meeting will take place after it's awarded. I don't have any dates right now until that's set.
Okay.
There is a completion date, I think, that we wrote into the...
Yeah, the end of August. So the project last year kind of dragged out a little bit into some colder weather, so we're trying to avoid that by moving it up a little bit.
Sounds good to me. Yeah, absolutely fantastic.
And I have a question. I mean, not necessarily for you, but for the future. Are we putting money aside in order for us to maintain these roads 20, I mean, 10 years on the line, or like, are we doing that so like that we don't have to come and catch up?
Bonding really has been the way that we're trying to keep up, and I think that we should continue to be aggressive with bonding. So it was last year that we bonded for 3.7 million. We did, last year's paving was roughly 2 million, this year will be roughly 1.7. Then over the next two years, it would probably be another bond of about $3 million to stay on track with the amount of work that we've been doing.
I have a question, too. I know John is like, as good as they get, and I'm very confident in him, but I was just wondering whether all of those roads that were on that list, you know, Avril Terrace and Burley and et cetera, et cetera, have all of those roads had, is CMP or whatever done with them, or, you know, like, the natural gas?
That's the whole idea of meeting with utilities. Summit's one of them. It's sewer, water, summit, and KSTD, so it's not CMP.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Right, but, yeah, right, they're signed off, we have a moratorium, seven years, John? Moratorium? Five, five-year moratorium on new pavement.
Because that's what kills these roads. Yeah. Okay, great, that's great. I'm sure that was the case, but...
And real quick, the city manager had mentioned bulky waste week, May 12. It's a week, not just a day, just so you know, yeah. And the 10 items is the equivalent of 32, the 32-gallon container, that's for loose material. So a mattress is one item, you know, a box spring is one item, a bureau is one item, but loose material like construction debris, bricks and plaster, things like that, they can fill up a big trash can, and that's one item. We want to limit bulky waste week to a week, not two weeks, which has been for the last two years. It's been two full weeks.
To be, just to be clear, people don't need to confine, they don't have to go out and buy 10 trash cans, right?
For loose material, yeah, we would expect that they would, right? We don't want our crew picking, you know, hundreds of bricks off the ground, right? We'd want them in containers. Yeah, loose material, Mr. Mayor, yeah, loose.
I don't want to see them lifting a 32-gallon tub of bricks either.
I don't think they would fill it all the way up, right, yeah.
All right. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? All right, thank you very much. Moving on to Resolution 882025.
Amend the policy for use of drug forfeiture funds adopted by the city council in Resolution 110, 2019.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Chief, good evening.
Good evening.
Just give us a rundown of what we're doing here.
Sure. So I attached a memo, I'll just go over it real quick with you guys. In 2019, the council adopted a resolution to regulate the use of forfeiture funds. Previous to that, the fund existed, but there were no regulations, and so it seemed to make sense to put reasonable limitations on that. Since 2019, we've all seen inflation go through the roof. You know, when I did the research on the CPI, it said a dollar in 2019 would have equal buying power to a dollar 26 now. In addition to that, in 2019, top patrol pay was 2568, and as of July 1, top patrol pay will be 3804, which is a 48% increase. Now, that was driven by not only inflation but a recruiting crisis and an ever-changing pay market for law enforcement in the state of Maine. So there's a limit right now. We can only use $10,000 out of that account without coming to the council for approval. So the last drug search warrant we did here in Waterville cost almost $2,000 in overtime alone, and that was utilizing our community partners, other agencies, et cetera. And so with what we've used in the day-to-day operations, drug investigations, et cetera, that is currently 63% expended for this year, and when it starts to get up to that level of expended, I become very careful about what we, not that I'm not careful to begin with, but I become very careful about what we use because I need to make sure that we leave enough in there to do the basic drug investigations. So as of this year, we've bought one laptop that needed to be replaced out of that, and the rest of it has been, you know, drug operations, and that's put us at that 63% expended. And so what we would like to do, knowing that last year in the calendar year 2024, we did 10 search warrants, if you extrapolate that number of almost $2,000 out, that can add up to about $20,000 in overtime, that adds up pretty quickly, and we really would like to be able to support some of those operations with this drug fund because it's what it's really intended for. So the current breakdown of the usage of the forfeiture fund, drug petty cash use in investigations, we've spent around $3,500 this year. We did purchase one Dell laptop, just under $3,000, and we do have the expected encumbrance that you approved last meeting for the $30,000 for fixing the heating system, which leaves us a unencumbered balance in that fund of just over or just under $58,000. $24,830 has gone into it this year. So what we're, well, and actually, I would just say that this fund, in the past, in addition to funding drug operations, has also gone to important city projects like helping to fund the cameras at Head of Falls, and it also funded the addition in our IT server room when we became a PSAP. And so what we're recommending is new language, which changes the limitation from $10,000 a year to say, "The police chief with the approval of the city manager shall have the authority to expend forfeiture funds and amounts not to exceed $15,000 for the support of ongoing drug investigations, such as overtime and investigative costs. And further, the police chief with the approval of the city manager shall have the authority to expend funds and amounts not to exceed $10,000 for the purchases of all other items listed in eligible uses for drug forfeiture funds. All other uses of drug forfeiture monies will require council approval." By doing this, it will allow us to split the two things. One is, we could replace equipment that is faulty, broken, or needs updating, but two, we would be able to have that separate $15,000 to support operations and fund overtime. And it really does, this fund really does act as a force multiplier for the police department, just looking to bring it up to something more current as far as the amounts we can expend.
All right. Any questions for the chief with regard to the changes he's outlined here? All right, seeing none. All those in favor? Wonderful, thank you very much. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
All right. Resolution 892025.
Approve $21,500 in funding from the Wealth Grant Fund for exterior improvements for application 2025-1, as submitted by the Waterville Community Land Trust.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All right, Michael, how are you, sir?
Very patiently waiting.
So patient.
Thank you.
Hi, how are you guys? Michael Hall, Community Development. So this was an application submitted to us by the Waterville Community Land Trust, particularly on behalf of one particular homeowner. This homeowner has quite a bit of extensive repairs on the exterior of the home, including shingles that need to be replaced, that are warping and falling off, as well as floorboards on the porch, ceiling boards that are in poor condition on the porch, and flashing between the housing and the porch that have been deteriorated. We reviewed the application, myself and finance, and we found that the homeowner not only meets geographic requirements that are within the application, but they also meet the income requirements, and we approved it from our end, so.
All right. Any comments from the council, questions? Yes, Councilor Green.
I just have one, and that is, I'm curious if there have been other applications, if people are, and that's directed to the land trust, I guess. Are you getting people applying for this fund, or, yeah, please?
Well, having Nancy Williams, Eight Park Place, having served on your housing committee, I have to say, it's a little disappointing that we're not getting a lot, and I don't think that our organization is alone in that. I'm hoping that this project will stimulate some interest. I've had the land trust, prior to this particular program, we had invested some of our own money and some money that we were gifted by a private donor and a volunteer labor to do a couple of other houses, but not a lot. And I, you know, I think it'd be interesting to talk about that sometime, on exactly what that means.
Right. Well, I think it falls under communications, doesn't it, partly? And it's, but I think this is something that perhaps will be addressed at the housing symposium that is to be held in June. I think it's important that people are more aware of this opportunity.
Well, I think moments like this will help.
Yeah. Okay, great, thank you.
Direct mail, send postcards to all houses that are eligible. Costs you less than five grand.
All right. Any other comments, concerns, questions from the council? All right, seeing none, all those in favor? All right, wonderful. And next up, Resolution 902025.
Approve $100,000 to the Waterville Community Land Trust from the Wealth Revolving Loan Fund to undertake major renovations to 3 Carrion Street.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All right, Michael, why don't you just...
Hi again, Michael Hall, Community Development. So this application is from the Waterville Community Land Trust for 3 Carrion Street, and this property needs major rehabilitations. The plan is to turn it into a duplex that will be condo-ed out, so to individual homeowners eventually. The house was purchased in poor condition, the foundation on the kitchen west wall is cracked and needs to be replaced, there are four to six layers of wallpaper that need to be removed, it needs new drywall, it needs acoustical insulation between floors, the existing floors need to be refinished, the downstairs kitchen needs to be rehabbed, the upstairs kitchen needs to have new cabinets, vinyl floor coverings, vapor barrier needs to be added to existing insulation, so on and so forth. So quite an extensive list of repairs. Again, this application was submitted to us, meeting all the geographic requirements in the Wealth Fund, Wealth Revolving Loan Fund guidelines, and the organization met the qualifications for the funds themselves, and it was reviewed by finance as well as my department.
Mike, just a quick question. Who's doing the work to either one of these properties?
So for this one in particular...
I mean, is it a company that you get, or is it just, you know?
It's a company that is sourced out through Waterville Community Land Trust.
All right.
Yep.
And you're going to be able to get that, I mean, you know, I've done a little bit of this kind of work myself, that you're going to get that list done for 100 grand? That seems like a lot of stuff.
So, yes, so for every application that we have, we have the, we have the organization that is submitting the applications submit a budget from the company that is doing all the work.
Wonderful. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
We have some folks from the land trust here. Would you like to come up and talk about this project? And it's kind of an exciting project for you all.
There are three of us here.
Yeah, all three of you come up. Come on, Diane, come on, come on now.
Well, I'll answer questions. What can I, what would you like me to address?
You know, I just had the question regards to, you know, who's doing the work, I mean, or the process of trying to find, because, I mean, as councillor Clepack mentioned, it's quite a lengthy list, so.
Tomorrow at 9:00 AM, I will be showing up at the location to do some demolition. Nancy has recruited me. This is like my third or fourth time.
Zero dollars, councillor.
Wait a second, Scott. Wait a second, Scott. Want to work on your house?
I think I'm the youngest person on the working crew, but they've done a tremendous amount of work, just, you know, basic demolition to get the cost down, and it's pretty amazing to see what's been done.
So I think, real quick, for me, like, I think, like, estimated timeline for the project, what you're looking, like, so this is, two units, he said, three units? Two units, yeah. So what are we hoping?
We're hoping for 18 months.
Okay.
And to answer the previous question, we do have another loan. Yeah, this is not the only one. It will cost, I'm sorry, it was you.
Yeah, yeah.
It will cost more money than...
I thought it was going to, yeah.
But there's a lot of volunteer labor involved, too.
That's great.
And in this one, I think there'll be more volunteer labor than there was in the previous one.
If I can help, I will.
Anytime, Tuesday and Thursday.
9:00 tomorrow morning, Scott's going to be...
9:00.
Bring some sledgehammers.
I know.
Bring your sledgehammer.
Goggles.
I'm more of a pry bar guy, but...
Well, we've got those, too. If you lose yours, we've got it. I'm serious, we need help, we really do.
I will help if I can.
Sounds like a good time.
They usually have me hold the bucket that pulls out the nails. But the other thing is, we've even applied for a loan from AARP to do retrofitting for, to make it for someone with disability and over age 50. We don't know whether we'll get that loan, but, or, actually, that was a grant, but all of this is to help us keep this cost, we'd like to sell to someone in the 80% range, which is a land trust requirement, so to make two condos in this neighborhood, that really would be for low-income families, we know we have a...
We know we have a, a, a market rate development, but we certainly need more for low-income as well. So we need all the resources we can get, and labor.
Excellent. I know it's been a while since you've had a project, so I'm certainly glad that you have one, and best of luck to you. We look forward to the updates over the last, over the next 18 months.
We'll have an open house.
You bet.
The work that you guys are doing is extraordinary, so thank you so much. It really is extraordinary.
All right, moving on to, roll call on this, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I got you.
Need a roll call?
All those in favor?
No, no, I was.
All right, moving.
I thought Patty was supposed to say that.
Moving on to Resolution 91, 2025.
Declare a vacancy for Ward 6, City Council.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay. Pretty simple thing here, we're just simply declaring the seat vacant. Any discussion? Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Before you, before you take a vote on this, this actually has a blank on when the special election will be held.
Isn't that the next one?
Well, it is, so it's a little awkward. So we could either strike out that last line that says, "At a special election to be held on, blank, 2025."
Yeah, just get it to be held on.
Can I move?
And then decide on the election date in the next item. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So is there a motion to amend to strike out at a special election held on?
Yeah, so moved.
Second.
And is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
All those in favor?
And now move as amended.
Move as amended, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor of the amendment?
All in favor, yeah.
It moved? Okay.
All right.
Now we are moving on to Resolution 92, 2025.
Authorizing a special municipal election to be held on blank, 2025, to fill a vacancy for Ward 6, City Council.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay, so looks like Patty has put together a couple of thoughts for us to kind of go through earliest date, latest date, not to conflict with November, and, and whatnot. So lots of schools of thought here, you know, obviously, moving this to later in the, in the season, in the year, is, would maybe be advantageous for the new person coming in. We are going to talk about, or start interviewing for the city manager, and we've already started the budget process, so to have someone come in and maybe take a vote and not be part of the entire process might be a little unfair for them. So we did, or Patty put together a bunch of dates for your consideration, so. Discuss amongst yourselves. Yes.
So, yeah, this is, these are very good dates to have in mind and to keep in mind. As the mayor has mentioned, coming into, coming onto the council at the tail end of the budget will be challenging. I would recommend the proposed election day be June 24th. It's, it's not so late that people have, have left, and, and it gives people time to consider running for this position, which is very important, and I think it ought to be rushed. And so, yeah, I, I, my vote is 6:24, 25.
Second.
Any discussion with regard to?
So that's an amendment, I'm assuming? To fill in the blank?
Right, fill in the blank.
Well, we haven't voted on it, right?
We're, we're, we're moving to amend it, to put the date on it.
Thank you.
And then we have to pass it.
Oh, I'm not yelling.
Just kidding. You'll know when I'm yelling.
All right, so we have a motion and a second?
Yeah.
All those in favor of the amendment? And now, move as amended?
Before we do that, can I, can I ask the city clerk if you had any other considerations that you thought were relevant here? If there, is there any reason to, in your mind, to prefer a different day?
No, we have to have one. So I, I have no feelings anyway. I wanted to give options to the council. The 24th is fine. I just wouldn't like it to bleed after, you know, into the next election prep cycle, but this, that's fine. The 24th is fine. We'll be here with 38 voters.
Yeah.
Remember this when we talk about the charter in a few years.
Correct.
Definitely.
All right, move as amended? All those in favor?
Yep. Six, oh.
All right, thank you very much. And at this point, I will attain in motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening, everybody.